It's 5:31 PM, and we'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Neutrona County Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So by way of introductions, my name is Hal Hutchinson, I'm the Chair. Two over is Jason Gutierrez, he's the Vice Chair. Right next to me on my right here is Board Member Robert Grant. Immediately to my left is Board Member Chad Zeal, and on the end is Board Member Matt Mitchell. I'd like to also introduce Planning and Zoning Director Kristi Turner, Jared Holbrook with the Attorney's Office, County Attorney's Office, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Cameron Shaw down on the end. So we've got a fairly small crowd tonight. Just to let you know, the Commission is an advisory board for the Neutrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. Each application on the agenda, we will hold, for each, we will hold an official public hearing. Hearings are recorded, and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the Commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. I'm not going to go into that part. This is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the Chair before addressing the Commission. Okay, that about does it. So, on to the agenda. First thing for consideration is the minutes from January 10th, 2023, and May 9th, 2023. The Board would entertain a motion, or the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'd move we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second for approval of both sets of minutes.
Do you have copies of the January minutes?
Yes. I can get a copy.
Satisfied? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the two sets of minutes as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And I might add that special thanks to the Board for covering for me in May, as I was having to attend to some work on the night of the meetings. So, thank you. Thank you for chairing the meeting.
You're welcome.
All right, so our first case for this evening, actually our only case, is a request by Paul "Indestri" Hurlbut, collectively the Hurlbuts. The Hurlbuts are seeking a 34.6-foot variance from the 100-foot setback requirement for light industrial zone lots to residential zone lots. The property in question is located at 2070 Doane Lane, Casper. May we have a Director's Report, please? Kristi?
Good evening. So this is case number VC 23-2. Again, it is a variance to reduce the setback requirements between a residential use and a light industrial use in the light industrial zoning district. The address is 2070 Doane Lane, Casper, Wyoming. It is Lot 3 of the Doane Lane subdivision. It is located approximately .6 miles south of I-25 and Howard Lane intersection on Salt Creek Highway on Doane Lane. It is the third lot east of the Salt Creek Highway on the north side of the road. The surrounding uses, to the north is light industrial, to the south is light industrial, to the east is that urban mixed residential lot, and to the west is light industrial. Wardwell Water and Sewer District for this area. This is your subject property located on that third lot on the north side of the street. The zoning on the east side of all of that is light industrial, as you can see, with the remaining chunks on the west as that urban mixed residential in green. This is just a satellite view, earth image view, for the subject property. And again, it's the third lot in that subdivision. So the background on this is this property was purchased by the applicant on February 20th of 2023 this year, and the reason for the setback would be to allow them to retain the existing Quanza Hut structure and allow for an extended area for building an additional structure on the lot. Currently, there is a manufactured home on the parcel, but the plans are to remove that from this property. So the 2022 zoning resolution requires a 100-foot property line setback between light industrial parcel that is adjacent to a residential district. That is in Section 2.06.03 Light Industrial. This parcel is .5 acres. The minimum acreage for light industrial is 2 acres, so this parcel is considered a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The zoning resolution, Section 5.22D2, stipulates that new development on a non-conforming lot shall comply with all bulk and use regulations for the parcels in that zoning district. The definition of a non-conforming lot from our zoning resolution is a platted lot or lot of record which, on the effective date of this resolution, or as a result of subsequent amendments, does not comply with the minimum lot size, frontage, width, or depth required by this resolution. Our key issue to address tonight is should Neutrona County approve the setback variance in the light industrial zoning district, which are not grounded in the requisite hardship criteria or other applicable law. Our definition for variance out of our zoning resolution is to grant relief to a person from a requirement of this resolution when specific enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship. A variance therefore permits construction or development in a manner otherwise prohibited by this resolution. There are going to be seven standards and criteria that a variance will need to meet in order to be approved, are considered for approval. The first is that there are exceptional or unique circumstances and conditions applicable to the property involved, and literal application of this resolution to the applicant's property will result in a hardship that is greater than the protection offered the community. The proposed finding of fact for this is that, again, this is the non-conforming lot of a half-acre, and the areas surrounding it are also non-conforming five-acre lots. The lot directly across the street to the south is light industrial and also abuts an urban mixed residential parcel, and under the same setback requirements for new development on that subject property. In the area between Forbes and Doane Lane, there are a total of six light industrial zone properties that are adjacent to an urban mixed residential property. The frontage for this subject parcel is approximately 158 feet. The similar light industrial lots that we've discussed, the six, have frontages that measure approximately between 250 feet and 90 feet. The setback for the requirement for the property, which would be 100 feet on the west side, 10 feet on the east and north side, and 25 feet from the south side, which would be the road, that allows for a total of 4,961 square feet of available space for development. Using GIS imaging and measuring tools, the industrial buildings that are to the east of the parcel at 1944 Doane Lane and 1939 Doane Lane measure between roughly 5,000 square feet and 3,200 square feet. Meeting the required setback supports the ability to build similar structures and does not result in an exceptional or unique circumstance that would create a hardship greater than the protection offered the community. The applicant's desire to keep the current Quanza Hut on the property in addition to building a new structure is the basis for applying for this variance. The applicant has the option of removing the Quanza Hut to take full advantage of the space available for development, or they can choose to keep the Quanza Hut and adjust the plans for the remaining available space. The choice to retain or remove the Quanza Hut does not constitute an exceptional or unique circumstance that would create hardship greater than the protection offered the community. Considering the information above, it is staff's position that this variance does not meet the exceptional and unique circumstances that would create a hardship greater than the protection offered the community for this parcel. Criteria number two is the special circumstances and conditions have not resulted from any willful modification of the land or building. The proposed finding of fact is that this variance sought is not a result of any willful modification to the land or building. Criteria three is the variance sought is the minimum variance necessary to provide balance between the purpose of the regulation sought to be varied and its impact on the applicant. Proposed finding of fact is this variance sought would be the minimum necessary to keep the Quanza Hut and build a 4,800-square-foot building. Number four is the variance will not result in a gain in use, service, or income for the applicant to a greater extent than available to other landowners in the vicinity. The proposed finding of fact from staff is granting the variance will allow a gain in use and service and possible income greater than this other six light industrial zoned lots that are adjacent to the urban mixed residential zones, which are under the same setback requirements. Number five, granting the variance will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood. Proposed finding of fact, by reducing the setback between light industrial use and the residential use, the variance threatens to impair the use of the adjacent residential property. The reduction of the setback could contribute to a conflict between incompatible uses now and in the future. The setback is established to reduce the effects of these types of conflicts. The protections required between uses also require physical screening buffers to be developed to provide additional protection for residential uses when adjacent to parcels used for industrial purposes. The reduction of the setback reduces the effectiveness of the required screening buffers. However, the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. Considering the information above, it's staff's position that this variance would impair the use of the adjacent residential property. Criteria six, granting the variance is consistent with the general intent and purpose of the county development plan and this resolution. And understanding that the subject parcel is located in neighborhood number 8, Wardwell, in the 2016 Neutrona County Development Plan for this neighborhood, the infill is industrial and commercial use. The industrial use of this parcel is supported through the 2016 Neutrona County Development Plan. The variance request is not consistent with the 2022 zoning resolution and its intent to provide protection between potentially incompatible uses. Additionally, the request does not meet the exceptional or unique circumstance necessary to establish hardship greater than that protection offered to the community as required in the zoning resolution as part of the variance approval criteria. And the last criteria is the site is not subject to a series of variances that circumvent the purpose of this section, and the proposed finding of fact is that this site is not subject to any other variances. As of the date of this report, staff had actually received two written comments, and staff sent notices to 85 neighbors. Staff proposes that the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend either for approval or denial of the requested variance by the Board of County Commissioners. Staff recommends that all findings of fact set forth herein be incorporated in the motion by reference and made a part thereof. Additional information collected is the county, when I reviewed the county zoning for this area, the zoning done in 1980 missed this particular area. So they went back in 1984, had a neighborhood meeting, discussions, and set what we see as the zoning standard in this area. Lots 1 through 3 and 30 through 32 were then zoned controlled industrial, and the rest of the area was zoned urban mixed, as you see it in the green. This was passed with Resolution 32-284. In 2000, the zoning district names changed from controlled industrial to light industrial, but the uses stayed similar. Additionally, the 100-foot setback between a residential use and a light industrial use was also established in that 2000 zoning resolution that we've had for the past 20 years. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. So, oh, actually, two questions. So it looks like there's a trailer that doesn't meet that current, am I correct on that, that the current trailer there does not meet the...
So that the mobile home that's on there is being removed?
Okay, so that, but it was not compliant, then?
It had, if it was being used as a residence, it would not have had a commercial use, and so it wouldn't have had the setback requirement.
Oh, so the setback requirement for 100 feet is only for commercial?
It's for industrial use.
Under, so if you were to just use to just store your things, you wouldn't, like if you just wanted to store your tractor there or something like that, that would necessarily be...
That would be an industrial use.
Okay, so what would be a non-industrial use, if you just...
So right now, everything that you can do on this property has to fall into the category of light industrial uses.
Okay, so it always has to be 100 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Because I was just looking at that property, 2123, which I think is zoned urban or residential? Because it looks like there's a structure that's not 100 feet from that, that 2069, the one below it? So I was just wondering, I'm just wondering whether there's been any previous exemptions given to people in the past, because it seems like some of the things there may not be compliant.
So, Mr. Chairman, in this area, there has been a long history of pre-existing non-conforming uses that have been present for the past 20 to 30 years, even going back to when they were discussing the zoning and how they came to those decisions in regards to what was going to be a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Good. Other questions for staff? I do have one. Could you explain, maybe in more detail, what, you talked about the screening requirements. So what is the screening and the setback? Is it one or the other, or both, or how does that work?
Mr. Chairman, it is both. So we have the 100-foot setback requirement, but then we also have an additional requirement between these uses that they be buffered by either a fence, landscaping, berm. We have, and I apologize, I don't have the section memorized, that outlines a table of approved buffers between these types of uses.
So it'd be a solid fence, maybe a wooden fence, or a...
Yes, sir.
Something to block the view?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but it's, it's both?
Yes, sir, both are requirements.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? At this time, we'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and give us their information on their application, please. And if you would, state your name and address, addresses.
Yes, Commissioner, my name's Patrick Luella, and I'm an attorney at Chapman Valdez in Lansing on behalf of the applicant, Paul Hurlbut. And my address is 125 West Second Street.
Thank you. Give your address.
My current address or the address of the subject property?
Your current address.
10350 Casper Mountain Road.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, I had planned to share a PowerPoint with you. Unfortunately, I'm not able to do that tonight, but I did print them off, so if I could give you some slides.
Sure.
I know it's not as good as the real deal, but it's the best I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that staff oriented you pretty well to the space, but I want to start with doing that again. On the first page here, what you'll see is a very similar map to what you saw before. We're talking about the property at 2070 Doane Lane, and we're seeking a 34.6-foot variance. Really important tonight that I want to convey, and I'm going to hit on this again, is that this is a half-acre property, piece of property. And again, I'll circle back to that, but the approximate dimensions facing the street are 158 foot wide by 137 foot deep. Currently, on the property, I know there was a question about this, but there's approximately a 16 by 75-foot uninhabitable mobile home. You'll see that, what I'm going to call on the west side of the property. That is, as it stands right now, approximately 20 foot from the west property boundary. On the east side of the property, you'll see the Quanza Hut that you heard about. That's roughly 24 by 30. I'm calling that the east side of the property towards that northeast corner. It was interesting, this piece of property did undergo some zoning changes, and I did the same research, and it, I'm not, I didn't find that it was missed, but it was originally, from what I found, zoned commercial, and then in 1984 moved to what is now the current light industrial. And it's that light industrial zoning designation that we're here to tonight. On the second page, if you would, go with me, the question is, okay, so what, it's zoned light industrial, what does that mean? Well, we know that the light industrial zoning has certain setbacks that are different and unique from your residential, your mixed urban residential, your commercial, and one of them, the big one, the big one, is the 100-foot setback from adjacent residential units. And that, what triggers this variance and the consideration before the Commission is the west property lot. That west property is zoned, the mixed urban residential. So currently, what I have on the second page is not only the zoning, I'm sorry, the setback requirements for light industrial law, but also I have the, if Mr. Hurlbut was to comply with every regulation, that he would have approximately 4,961 square foot of a development envelope, if you will, on this entire piece of property. And what I thought was really interesting is that this is 22% of the property that he can develop. Again, mind you, this is a half-acre lot, and we're going to come back to that again. Yes, the Quanza Hut is there, it is in good standing, working order. That is in the northeast corner. It's approximately 10 foot off the property boundary within the development envelope. Now, mind you, that east edge of the property does not have the 100-foot setback, because the property to the east is also zoned, the light industrial. The Quanza Hut's in good working order, Mr. Hurlbut would really like to keep that, if possible, and use it as storage, which is contemplated under the light industrial zoning regulations. If that was the case, the development envelope of this property shrinks to 4,241 square foot. That's 19% of the whole parcel that he can develop. Now, if you would, go with me to the third page. What we have here are the two different layouts as to the current layout of the lot and the proposed layout. You'll see on the left-hand side, there's the mobile home, again, approximately 20 foot from that west boundary. And more importantly, what we are proposing is on the right-hand side. We would ask this Commission to approve this, the County Commissioners, to move that from 20-foot setback and a mobile home, a non-conforming use on this site, to approximately, rounding here, but about 65 foot from that west boundary. Again, that's where the 34.6-foot variance comes into play there. So Mr. Hurlbut can build a storage facility, and I really want to hammer this home, because it was a little confusing to me when staff told you, but the storage facility that is anticipated at this lot is certainly within the contemplated uses of a light industrial. In fact, the lot to the east of it, there's two storage units there, I think you heard one was 4,200 or 4,400 square foot, but it's storage, that's what we're talking about. I know this is beside the point, but I think it's important for you to know, the reason why Mr. Hurlbut needs storage is that his house is on the mountain, and recently, as this year, he's had a heck of a time getting equipment up to the mountain, because they closed Casper Mountain Road. When that happens, he has no place to put his equipment. And so it was his plan to build a storage facility, I'm not even sure that facility is the right word, but a storage structure to put this equipment in if in need, if and when the need arises. Mr. Hurlbut did just get a rendering of what was contemplated, and what I'd like to show you guys. And if I could pass that around, I only have the one copy I have. But what you see there is what I'll call the width and length. The width on that proposed storage structure would face the street. You see the garage then on the south side, and then the other garage on the east side. And I just want to highlight that in comment, that the garage to the south faces the street, it's not towards the adjacent residential unit, and the garage to the east faces the other adjacent light industrial and storage units. Thereby, it's... thereby specifically designed to not interfere with any of the adjacent uses, particularly the mixed-urban residential. And on my fourth page of printouts that I gave you, one thing that really struck me as unique about this lot compared to other lots in the area is that based off my best guess and my best math, this is one of two lots in an approximate half-mile radius that is only a half-acre in size and adjacent to a residential district. And why is this important? Because it's that residential district that triggers all of this. If it's light industrial to the west of him, we're not here tonight. He can build anywhere up until 10-foot until we get there. But it's that residential district that is why we're here. And so as best as I can tell, this is one of two lots this size in a half-mile radius where it creates a significant hardship on him to conform to the 100-foot setback and still be in regulation with all of the other requirements. Again, from the best of the math that I could come up with, this is approximately 4.5% of the similarly situated properties. All of the other properties, not most, I should say most, 99.9%, I guess, of the other properties are well over the half-acre size, because they're bigger. And in fact, you can look to the north, you can look to the south. We're talking some lots as big as two, I think some larger, but just inherently, when those lots have that size, the 100-foot setback is easy. But when you're restricted to a lot that's 158-foot wide, 100-foot of that is very cumbersome. It makes this very unique, and it makes it an exceptional hardship for Mr. Hurlbut. And these special circumstances and conditions, we don't believe and agree with the staff that haven't resulted from any willful modification to land or building. In fact, what we're asking is for a variance that would allow Mr. Hurlbut to get this piece of property, zoned light industrial, closer to in line with the setback requirements for this particular lot. Again, right now, that mobile home sits about 20-foot from the property line. We want to kick that back another 45-foot. We want that to be about 65-foot. Again, I'm rounding these numbers, but just for simplicity tonight. We believe that there will be adequate protection for neighboring lots, particularly the one that the setback is designed presumably to protect the most, and that is the lot to the west, especially because there are the buffer zone requirement. There were some questions about this, but this is over and above and in addition to that setback requirement. And to point this out again, where those garages are at, I think, really has designed to lessen any burden on the adjacent residential district. That garage sitting to the south and to the east would be specifically designed to do that. So I think that there's adequate protections for what the setback, in my opinion, was designed to protect. And in fact, granting of the variance will not impair the use of the adjacent property, we don't believe. In fact, if anything, it gets us closer to and in line with what's contemplated in this area. In fact, I would point out that if the variance is denied, and Mr. Hurlbut wishes to go forward with the storage structure, the Quanza Hut has to come down. It moves everything over to the east, and at that point, it creates a significant hardship to the neighbors to the east. As part of our application, we submitted it, and in fact, I think it's the very last page of the slides I gave you. The neighbor to the east is Jim Edgeworth, and he specifically asked that that not be...that structure not be moved to the east, for the reason being that the way that the wind blows through there, the snow drifts, there's a large concern that with a large structure that buys setback requirements, because it's light industrial, light industrial, if it sits 10-foot from the edge, all of a sudden now you have snow drifts on the neighboring landowner, and that's a significant hardship upon them to access their property. And so we believe that if the variance is granted, it actually prevents that unnecessary and undue hardship for the adjacent landowners. While I'm there, I will comment, the two comments that were received, please tell me if I'm wrong, was from Edgeworth and Williston. That's right. We actually provided those to staff. Mr. Hurlbut went out and tried to talk to all the neighbors. Again, Edgeworth is directly to the east of Williston, and I'm probably mispronouncing that, and I'm bad with names.
That's right.
Okay. He is directly to the south. So this is the landowner that has the other half-acre lot that is zoned light industrial that is adjacent to the residential district. He approved it. I know Mr. Hurlbut has tried and tried and tried to track down the Chavezes. That is the property owner directly to the west. From our best guess, and I don't want to take any words from him, but from our best guess, that that is a rental. He did talk to a gentleman there who said his dad lived in Powell.
Right. That owned it, and that he was buying it for him, but there was a U-Haul trailer there Sunday, according to one of the other neighbors, and that he was moving out. So no reply from Laura Chavez that is on title as far as owning the property.
So, and I know they got a letter and didn't submit a comment yet, but we've done our due diligence, too, and to try to get the blessing from these adjacent landowners. This variance won't alter the character of the neighborhood. I think the staff reported that. We agree. And again, the use that's contemplated in the storage structure is exactly what's contemplated by lots that are zoned light industrial. As far as I can tell, there's been no series of variances that would circumvent any of the county's development plans. In fact, from what I understand, it's the long-term plan that this whole area move to either commercial or light industrial. And if that's the case, albeit down the road or in the future, again, we don't have an issue, because if it's all light industrial, commercial, the setbacks, at least from adjacent lots, are the 10-foot. It's only the residential district that kicks in to that 100-foot setback requirement. In the end, we really believe that this is an exceptional, it's a unique, and there are special circumstances on this property that make it a good candidate for variance. And we'd be open for any questions, and if I've left anything out, I certainly want Mr. Hurlbut to interact with you guys and get those questions answered as well.
Questions for the applicant?
Chairman, I have one hypothetical question. Okay, if he, if they changed the zoning from light industrial to urban residential, could they still put their building in there? And would that change the offsets?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That zone change would not be supported by our development plan.
No, because I would love to build a house on a foundation there with a shop.
And from what I understand, the light industrial absolutely does not permit residence of any form, so this non...the mobile home that's there is this non-conforming use that is not in compliance with the setback requirements for the zoning at this point.
Jason.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant, that rendering you gave has a lane two off of the corner there. Orient me to where that lane two...
That would be facing the street and facing towards the east.
The street and east.
Yes. My intentions is to put the garage doors facing the east, so that way, when I'm running table saws, planers, that kind of stuff, and I have garage doors open, that sound is not traveling towards the residences. If I put the back of the building towards the residence, then the sound will travel towards Salt Creek Highway and to the east, towards the other light industrial areas.
Okay. Thank you. And you, I'm sorry, you purchased this in February?
Yes, sir. And I purchased it under the impression, looking at the assessor's website, it was residential. I come to find out it was zoned light industrial. That's when I didn't know what else to do. So it's either leave it the way it is and tear down the trailer and try to lease it out to whoever to park whatever they want there, or try to build my shop that I intended on building.
I think, Mr. Chairman, staff, could they put a trailer back in there?
I believe that that trailer has not been used as a residence for...
It was lived in when they moved out and I purchased the property. They were moving out when I purchased the property.
Then if there was somebody there within the last 12 months, they could...
Continue the non-conforming use.
Continue, the replacement would have to be a match and upgrade.
But I couldn't build any adjoining structures, like a garage or anything, if I kept it mixed residential?
So what you would have, Mr. Chairman, would be a remaining non-conforming use as a residence, with that you could build a shop as a accessory building to the residence. But it would still become a, it would still remain a non-conforming use in the light industrial zone.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, just on the non-conforming, so I guess it's, so because it was there before, then it's legal to put something in there that's the same, because it's grandfathered, grandfathered in? Because I, because you, I just, he doesn't want to go through all this construction, and then all of a sudden, you know, something changes and...
So, Mr. Chairman, if he replaces the mobile home with another mobile home, that would be a site improvement, and all of the setbacks that would apply to that use would apply to the new placement of the, of a mobile home. So you would have to make sure that you met the 25-foot and the 10-foot on the side setbacks when placing the new mobile home in a site improvement. But we do allow improvements of mobile homes with, you can't increase the square footage of the mobile home. So whatever dimension it is now would be what you have to replace it with. You couldn't increase a single wide with the size of a double wide.
But you could add on a garage further to the east.
Yes, sir.
I have a related question for you, Kristy. Notwithstanding the grandfathered trailer that would replace the one that's there, what could you put in that 100-foot? What can go in there? Just park cars, or...
So, Mr. Chairman, within the 100-foot setback would be any additional parking that you would need. It is, it is really the, the setback is for the structure. So if there's parking space that you could use...
So, any other questions for the applicant?
So I do have a question for you, and as I start, as I stated when we started out, we're an advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners. And basically, what we do here is sort things out, and then we send off to the county commissioners our recommendation for approval or denial. So there are, I would guess, jillions of, figuratively, jillions of guys that would like to get exceptions like you're asking for, and people that have, that are aware of the setback issues and aware of these type things, and just decide it's not even worth coming to ask about. It's just, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to get it. So given your statement that you were unaware that this was light industrial next to a residential, and you've given us some, you know, nice-looking building, and, you know, the next-door neighbor is, that's a nice-looking place, what would you tell us? How are we going to go to the commissioners and say, okay, we think this is a good idea? With all these other guys over here, they're going to come line up next month.
Sure. Well, I appreciate the question, and I think what you can go to the commissioners and say with a straight face is, look at the character of this neighborhood, and maybe that's not the right term. Look at this particular piece of property in comparison with the other property that is zoned light industrial in this area. And I come back to this as a half-acre piece of property that is zoned light industrial that is subject to the exact same requirements as these adjacent lots that are four acres in size, maybe bigger. And the hardship and the unique circumstances applicable to this lot, not John Doe who's going to come here next month, or his sister Betty Smith, but this lot warrants the variance. And in doing so, and I didn't make this comment earlier, and I want to now, but in doing so, at first glance, you might say, well, heck, that's going to increase his use for that particular property. But when you look at the bigger picture, and again, I'm talking about those adjacent lots to the north, to the south, to the east, in fact, the use, if this variance is still granted, or if this variance is granted, will be no greater than the use of any of those other light industrial zone lots. And it's the fact that this is a half-acre lot that makes this one an exceptional, unique case. And I think you could tell the commissioner that with a straight face.
I have one more question for staff. I note, on the east side of the neighbor's property, the residential property, there's about 20 feet, it appears to be an easement. Telephone poles, I don't remember what the power, or what that is through there. Does that mean anything to our situation here today?
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about on the west side of the residential property?
The residential property immediately to the west, between the subject property and that residence is about a 20-foot, and there's a...
Because of damage overhead, you got to...
It's apparently a utility easement. Nothing, nothing's there.
Can I give you a picture of what we're discussing right now?
Sure.
So this is where the fence of the subject property is. This is the property line of the subject property. So my fence is actually about 12 feet that side of the property line, and there is electricity going overhead, so there's got to be some...
So it's an electric easement.
Yeah, so there's got to be an electrical easement there. I don't know if it's a recorded easement or anything like that. I did not get anything on the paperwork when we closed on the property that said that there's an easement there, so. But I think through the electrical company or utility company, you have to have some sort of easement if there's overhead.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have easement recorded for that that is being reflected through our GIS.
I was just wondering if...
There's a phone box there, too.
I was just wondering if it'd soften up the 30, what, the 60-foot variance request? Maybe not.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's, if it's on the, on the west side of the property, it would be included in the 100-foot setback between the residential property and the structure?
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant before we have the public hearing? Okay. You guys might as well stay there, because you're probably going to speak in favor of, I'm guessing. So at this time, we'd like to call to order public hearing for consideration of variance request VC 23-2. Call the public hearing to order. This time, all in favor of the application, would you please come forward and state your name and address?
Oh, me, Paul Hurlbut.
Got it.
I'm in favor of it. I'm just trying to improve the property. I'm not trying to create any hardships for anybody. I would like to... I would like to request the variance so I can put the garage doors on the east side of the building, so the back of the building is towards the residential area, so any noise that I might make coming out of the building is off of that, and then that eliminates the issue of the snow building up on Jim Edgeworth's property, where he, he uses it for his clients with, when they're moving and stuff, and they need to have their trailers or something out of the property while he's selling their properties. So, sometimes he has fifth wheels and camp trailers and stuff parked there on that side of the property, and that's why we were discussing the setback that he said, you know, it would be great if you don't build it up against the fence, so it's not creating a giant snowdrift across my property.
Thank you. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How much trouble is it to take a Quonset hut down and re-put and build it somewhere else?
It's not a giant, it's not a giant issue. It's just, it's a great dry storage building for four-wheelers and tools and stuff like that, why I am building the shop. The shop is probably going to decrease in size a little bit, because I had Clary do that rendering today, and it's gone up about 35% since February, so I cannot afford where they're at now without concrete is where I was at in February with concrete. So, it's a, it's about $270,000 now, and I was looking at like $190,000 in February, so.
And I'll point out, if that's the case, that variance will certainly go down.
Yes.
We get a lot closer to that, what's contemplated with the setback.
So, I mean, yes, I can tear down the Quonset hut and build, and then put the garage doors on the west side of the building, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for the... Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, would you please come forward? Seeing none, call an end to the public hearing. Any discussion?
I see the, the issue that they're bringing up, that it's a smaller property and the offsets were properly put in there for properties that were larger, but my other question is, if we approve this, do we have, we don't really have any guidance on how to, how to do these variances, because one of the things we're not supposed to do is do spot variances. And if we, and this to me seems like a spot variance, it seems like you'd almost need to do it for every property up there and change it universally, which I don't think is really our, our role, that'd be a county commissioner, county commissioner thing. So, I guess my question is, can you move, can you either say not approve it, but then have the, send it up to the county commissioners and say, you know, we need some guidance at looking at these as to what factors we should consider in making these, these decisions, because I'm just, I'm just not sure we have enough information to go against the zoning. You know, that'd be my only thing, is it just means you're opening up a can of worms without some guidance from the county commissioners as to how, how they want us to look at this.
Wouldn't it be easier to rezone that?
Mr. Chairman, the denial would still go in front of the Board of County Commissioners for their ultimate decision, as this board is still just the advisory board. That would just be your recommendation to the board. The best route to go on this could be to table this until the next meeting, and we can do the necessary research to get you a better answer for your, to be able to make your recommendation, as this is a little more of a complicated issue than what we've seen with some of the other cases. But otherwise, the denial or approval of this board would still go in front of the commissioners.
They would have to agree to table it, right?
Yes, you would need to make a motion, someone would need to make a motion, and...
I think they have to agree to it, I think.
They don't need to agree to table it. That would be your decision at this point. Essentially, tabling the matter would just be to allow for more information to be gathered.
I feel that by allowing this variance, it's going to make a definite improvement to the property, just by the looks of it. And he was also led astray by the county when he reached out to the assessor's office to find out how it was zoned, so he bought that on that presumption.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not a county assessor, but I believe the assessor assesses you based upon your use, not your zoning. They don't have any impact on zoning. And so, they're looking at taxing it. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to the applicant, but the 100-foot has been in place for over 20 years. The light industrial was there for some, some number of time. The guy should have known going into the project what, what was there, and perhaps there was other buyers that passed on that property because they were aware of what was there. And as I think back to variances we've done in the past, they've been, you know, topographical issues, so setback being whatever, 40 feet, and this particular lot has a huge ravine, and so if they met the 20-foot setback, the home would have to be built in the ravine. And so, that, that created a hardship that they couldn't use the property the way their neighbors had. Those are some, some of my thoughts.
Any further discussion?
I would employees of Spider Silver, years ago, it was zoned, I think you had to be 100 feet or thereabouts from the road. That's recently been redone a few years back. Now you can build close enough to the road that allows drifting in the road, and they had said it's fine. So, a lot of these stipulations need to be considered at these stuff, when they rewrite stuff.
All right, so the chair would entertain a motion for approval, denial, or as we've heard, possibility of tabling.
I move to, we've considered all relevant factors, including, but not limited to, those set forth in the zoning resolution, and find that the variance may or may not meet approval, but on that note, I think we should vote to approve the variance.
We have a motion to approve the variance. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the variance. Okay, any more further discussion? All in, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman would break the, break the tie. I would vote aye for, for not approving as well. We have a vote of two for, three against. That will be the recommendation to go to the county commissioners for their meeting next month, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, could we add something? And then just ask them to give us some guidance on these, on these variances, so that we know how to, how to, how to sort them out, because, because that's, because if they do somehow overturn or change the decision, it'd be useful to know their criteria as to how they're overturning and what things we should look at, because, because we're just kind of looking at our, at our zoning regulations, and it's almost like getting some common law, you know, information from them, so we know how to, how to kind of go through this. Because, because it's, I kind of, I'm sympathetic to them, because it's a small property, it's utter freedom, but I think it'd be useful to have some, you know, some guidance for them on how to look at this stuff.
So, I would take it that the meeting minutes go to the commissioners, and the comments that we make are there for them to consider as well. So, Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell's input would be added to the recommendation for not approving. Next on the agenda is old business. Not aware of any. Public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment? So, I am aware that a move is afoot to replace or reinstate planning and zoning commissioners that, whose terms are ending, I guess, the end of this month.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have had some applicants submit. I am waiting to hear from the board in regards to their next steps and when they're going to schedule those. We need one or two additional applicants that reside out in the county to fill our last vacant position.
Okay.
As of last week, when I talked to Dave North, they hadn't seen any of the applications. That was like Wednesday of last week.
Michelle has them. So, again, I don't know what their process is, but I know that they do have them in the office.
So, we don't come back until we hear something? Those of us that are up for...
I will let you know as soon as I have information.
Because I hand-delivered mine, because I couldn't figure out how to do it on the computer.
So did I.
So, if everyone will recall, we had the special meeting date in July because of parade day and conflicts with the fair and what have you. So, I have on my calendar that July 17th is our next meeting.
That is correct. July 17th will be the next meeting with, and again, we have to have our quorum, so we have at least three individuals that we could use for that July meeting. And then it would be up to the applicant if they wish to continue with their case with the three, or if they would rather wait if we do not have a full board.
All right.
I am not sure I'm going to be able to make it on the 17th.
Okay. I'll take that into account.
Well, if the commissioners don't act, you won't have a quorum or a zoning, planning zoning committee at all.
I'll be here.
You'd be the only one.
He'll be the board.
I mean, Robert will, Robert will still be on the board, he just won't be here. Can you Skype that?
All right, so Kristi, you also mentioned a possibility of doing training. I don't know if you're still talking about doing that in July or puts you up as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would love to be able to in July. I would love to be able to have a commission set, so that we can have training at the end of July.
At the end of July, so after, not, not at the same time as the board meeting?
If we can make it happen at the same time with the board meeting, if there's, that would be ideal. Or I can send out an email and y'all can respond to alternative evenings, that you would be available to commit an hour and a half to, to two hours to some additional commission training, to help clarify some of the processes and the criteria.
So, obviously, we need to wait and see what the commission, commission does for reappointments.
Yes, sir.
And last but not least, on my list of things is, we'd also talked about YOPAS and involvement of, we've been talking about it for years, but I don't think we've ever done anything. I have possibilities, but it just hasn't materialized, so I would ask that that continue to be something that you offer us opportunities to get more involved in the planning world.
So, I was able to attend the one in the spring. I didn't think I was going to be able to, and when I was there, they were looking for a location. I suggested that we could host. I am waiting to hear back from them, that that would be late September-ish, mid to late September-ish is when we would do the fall conference. But I will keep you up to date. I will, I will tell you why YOPAS is not, is a, is a complete volunteer organization of planners within, within Wyoming, and so getting them to nail down dates and plans at this point, I don't have any information other than, eh, fall. But we will definitely, everybody is registered with YOPAS. Therefore, your conference fee is completely paid. So, in the fall, if it is not here in Casper, the, it would just be a travel expense to wherever, wherever they choose to go, if not here in Casper. But I, I offered us up, said we would host.
Cross our fingers, and that'd make it easier on a lot of us to take care of the local...
Thank you.
...situation, yeah. All right, anything else? Or entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.